Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Caddo Parish Work Session Meeting. At this time, I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones. And we will have our roll call by clerk. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Crackman?
Here.
Commissioner Greg Young?
Present.
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner John Paul Young?
Here.
Commissioner Burrell?
Here.
Commissioner John?
Here.
Commissioner Gage what?
Present.
Commissioner Blake is absent. Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Commissioner Cothran?
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus?
Here.
And Commissioner Everson?
Present.
All right, you have 11 of 12 commissioners present. That does constitute a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We've already had our invocation and pledge of allegiance in our prior meeting. So we will forego those two items. And go to the next item, please.
Thank you very much. And at this point, I'm not aware of any agenda additions for today unless you have any, Madam President?
No, sir, I do not have any.
Okay, we'll move forward to citizens' comments then. And citizens' comments are limited to three minutes. At this point, we have not received any requests for citizens' comments unless you have received any directly.
I have not received any directly.
Okay, then we can move forward to the next item on our agenda, which is visitors. And we do have two potential visitors today. I know we did hear from the visitors that they may or may not be able to make it at this point. But our first item today is scheduled to be a visit from representatives for the Food Bank of Northwest Louisiana.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Tina Jones, and this is my coworker.
Susan Garcia.
We're here in Martha Merrick Steed representing the Food Bank of Northwest Louisiana. First of all, we'd like to say thank you for all you have done in the past to help us feed our neighbors in Caddo Parish. Right now, we're coming to you asking for emergency funding to help us through this time of struggle with SNAP and with the halt in federal paychecks. Susan's got some more details, so...
Just down a little bit because I'm short. Okay, so I'm not as savvy with talking like Ms. Martha, so I'm going to read what she wrote.
Take your time, speak from your heart. We know what you do on a daily basis, helping out our communities. So just talk about that. Thank you.
So the Food Bank of Northwest Louisiana is requesting emergency funding from the Caddo Parish Commission to help residents of Caddo Parish who are facing food insecurity. Those most affected include families living below the poverty level, seniors, people with disabilities, and households with children who rely on Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP benefits. In addition, many local government employees are now struggling to afford food because they have not received paychecks. We are requesting $100,000 in emergency funding from the Caddo Parish Commission to provide immediate food assistance during this crisis. The Food Bank will use the funding to supply food to our existing network of partner agencies, pantries, soup kitchens, and other distribution sites throughout Caddo Parish. Our network reaches every area of the parish, from the southern communities to the Arkansas border. Because the Food Bank already has the necessary infrastructure, trucks, forklifts, warehouse space, and experienced staff, this assistance can be distributed quickly and efficiently using our normal delivery system. This need is immediate and short-term. Once funding is approved, the Food Bank can begin distributing food to our partner agencies within two weeks. This quick turnaround will help prevent hunger for parish residents who are struggling right now. All assistance provided through this funding will serve residents of Caddo Parish. Food will be distributed through the Food Bank's partner network to reach individuals and families in every part of the parish. Recent reductions and policy changes to Louisiana's SNAP program have left many low-income families with fewer benefits and less money to buy food. At the same time, local government employees who have not received paychecks are facing unexpected financial hardship. These factors combined have created a sharp rise in food insecurity across our parish. And the Food Bank of Northwest Louisiana is seeking increased demand from every corner of our network. With this emergency funding from the Caddo Parish Commission, we can ensure that food is available for all who need it most during this difficult time.
That will conclude your presentations?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I know that I have at least one commissioner who would like to have some comments. And that's Commissioner John Paul Young. And we'll watch the board for others before you end your presentation. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much for your presentation. Could you tell us, I heard on the radio that the state government was planning to provide some funding to continue to extend SNAP benefits. Could you tell us how that influences your need?
It's limited, and it's to seniors, disabled adults, and families with children. That still leaves a large portion of people who are not getting benefits. And also, there's the people who are not getting government checks. And we're seeing an increase in that demand as well.
Okay, so the short of it is you could still use this funding to meet a short-term emergent need?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's really my only question. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, and I would just like to let the commissioners know that it appears to be a problem with some of the boards. So if you would like to speak, please let me know. Thank you, I see Commissioner Gregory Young and Commissioner John Atkins. Is there anyone else? I have you, Commissioner Carther, next. Okay? If you decide that you want to speak, just please let me know, and so we get this issue resolved with our boards. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
Commissioner Veronica Carther?
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of questions. First of all, thank you all for being here today and standing on behalf of those who cannot stand in this state. The Northwest Louisiana Food Bank, what parishes do you all cover, other than just Caddo?
We cover the top seven parishes. So it's Caddo, Bojor, Biambel, DeSoto, Webster, and...
Claiborne.
Claiborne, and Biambel.
Are any of those other parishes making a contribution to you all emergency at this particular time?
Not at this time, that we know of.
Okay, and it has been kind of alluded to, who will be receiving. Because again, I did hear about the SNAP program, and you kind of took care of that. And I do have a concern about those people that are working and not receiving checks. I guess my question would be going forward, okay, if you were to receive a $100,000 emergency fund, how long would that last with us not knowing how long this shutdown could possibly last?
All right, so the game plan, as it stands right now, is that we're going to purchase food boxes. They're already prepared food boxes that we can get in quickly. They're $18 a box. And so a truck is 1,600 boxes for about $29,000. Keep in mind, that box has, what is it, 18 pounds, and it's like 18 items. So for maybe, we sat down and looked at it, maybe a family of four, like two adults and two kids, that might last a week. Maybe if you know how to stretch it, we're hoping that we'll have some fresh vegetables and fruits and stuff like that to put with it and supplement it. But, you know, as far as how long it's going to last, it's all corn, how much fun. You know, we obviously can't fill the complete gap between SNAP and what we have. We're just not, you know, that's too much. But we're going to try as much as possible to fill as much of the gap as we can. So to give an idea of how long that will last, I just know that $100,000 will buy about three and a half truckloads, you know, about 8,000 boxes, and however many people we can get that to. And we're seeing a substantial increase already. I mean, it's crazy right now, and we have a lot of people looking, and a lot of different people than we normally do as well. Not only people who are normally on SNAP, but the whole other group that's, you know, government employees that aren't getting paid. They need food as well.
Correct. Is there any vetting process that you all use to actually make these distributions? You know, as far as who you would give to?
We're trying to set up now, where like, for the ones that are not normal SNAPS but are the government, that we would go like to the airport for TSA employees, Social Security, for the Social Security employees. Susan's been calling to find out how many people and how much they need. We've talked about like Barksdale, they're not getting it, you know, but that's, excuse me, because that's not Caddo. That wouldn't be this money. But there's a lot of places where we're going to set up so that they can get it. We'd hope to get a list of the snap recipients who weren't getting SNAP now, but we haven't gotten that yet. We're hoping to still get that, so that we can vet against that.
Okay, and even though you're asking the commission to consider a $100,000 emergency fund, what can the general public, who can the general public contribute to, to assist in this emergency? Because the one thing I do know, most of us that are working, that are receiving pay, are concerned about everybody right now, particularly the elderly, the young adults, and things of this nature. And what is it, and how much would, say $50, $100, what would that do?
So, yeah, so for every, you know, like, the boxes are $18. So if you give $100, we will be able to buy that many boxes with it. We're seeing people are reaching out to us and wanting to contribute. So we're telling everybody to go onto our website at foodbanknla.org, and there's a donate button. And that's all going toward this food.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because we've already bought two truckloads, you know, ahead of time. It goes fast, though. That's already out of the warehouse, and we just got it last week.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Carther. This is one of the things that we knew that we would be facing. So we were very proactive in making sure that we allocated the funds back in August. I think it was July when we finally passed Mrs. CEO for distribution. But due to the shortages that we were already facing in Northwest Louisiana in Caddo Parish, we were not able to do the distribution at that time. I was hoping that we hadn't gotten to that item yet, but I would like to make some comments on this while we're talking about it. A lot of, I think what we're asking with this emergency funding is that this funding is allocated only to Caddo Parish residents and those who are already receiving those SNAP benefits. And a way that you could identify them is by using that SNAP award letter. And they could be able to bring it into the facilities.
So you're saying not for the government, people not getting government checks?
There could be, we could make that a part of it, but I think that this one was strategically to address the issues with the SNAP. But that was not discussed. We can come back to it when it's time for us to talk about that item. I just wanted to make sure that I put it out there at this time. We have some more commissioners who are on the board to speak as well, okay? Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam President. Just give me your elevator speech, maybe less than one minute.
The elevator speech? Oh, my gosh. So, like, you're putting me on the spot, because this is Martha's wagon here, not mine. I'm the finance director. I can count the money, but...
Yes, ma'am, I understand, but for a lot of...
I'm passionate about this.
I understand.
Very passionate about it, and it's something really hard for me just to talk about without even getting more passionate. But when ever did we decide that food and medical was a luxury item? We have so many people in our parish that do not have enough money to buy food, and they're having to make decisions that nobody should have to make. And it's not just the unemployed, it's the underemployed, and the people that just do not have the funds. And without food, I mean, just, we're all very blessed in this room. We all have food. But when you don't have food, that becomes a whole nother element. And the fact that now they're not only not, if they're getting their SNAP benefits, it's different. Like, they're not getting all of it at one time. They're getting 25% of it each week. So now they've got to figure out how to budget, and, you know, may or may not even know how to do that. And they're also having to work now, right? They have to work 80 hours, or volunteer 80 hours. So there's more requirements, and it's just, it's at a time right now where everybody's very stressed, and it's just lifting that even higher. Did I answer your...
Well, not really.
Not really?
Yes, ma'am. What I wanted to ask you...
Why don't you?
What I wanted to ask you. There are a lot of people who hear "Food Bank," and they really don't know what that means.
Right.
Okay, and so what I'd like for you to do...
Is tell you what the Food Bank does.
Please inform those in our community who see that it's on the agenda for us to provide funds for the Food Bank. Please inform our general public, what is the Food Bank that you represent, and who is currently eligible to receive food?
So the Food Bank is a food gathering facility. So what we do is we reach out to other places in the, you know, community. We're part of Feeding America, and we get as much food in as we can. We get food from our local grocery stores, close dated, and then we get a lot of food from the USDA, which comes with a lot of requirements. You've got to, you know, make sure that everybody meets the income requirements that are just the same as for SNAP in order to qualify for food. We gather it, and then we distribute it to what we call agencies. They are usually churches, soup kitchens, halfway houses, other nonprofits to provide food to our neighbors in the community. They get the food and actually deliver, or give it to our neighbors that are food insecure. We also have a lot of after-school programs and kids programs. Susan, talk a little bit about that.
Yes, so we also have the backpack program. A lot of you probably have heard of that. That's where we have children that are going to school, and they may not have enough food in their homes where they have food to eat during the weekends, whenever they're not at school, or during the holidays, whenever they're out of school. And so what we do is we provide the school with some shelf-stable meals. And on Fridays, they will put that bag of food in the child's backpack, so the child can bring it home. And they will have breakfast and lunch meals to eat over the weekend or during the holiday. And so that's the program that lasts over the school year. And then during the summer, we have summer feeding, where we basically, it's the same program except for it's during the summer, and we provide breakfast and lunch meals all through the summer. And right now, we're starting up some after-school programs. It's basically the same thing, but it's programmed for programs that are providing after-school programs, where they're doing tutoring or other activities with kids. For example, working with the YWCA right now, getting them set up for an after-school program with their kids, where we provide meals, like a healthy snack and a dinner for the kids that are attending there. And then we have the senior box program, where the, it used to be Catholic Charities had that program. Now we have it, it's where we provide a box of food, a 40-pound box of food for the seniors that are 60 and over.
As our commission president just noted, our current guidelines, under our current guidelines, the individual that's eligible for SNAP, for SNAP would automatically be eligible for the Food Bank. Is that consistent with your understanding?
That is correct.
Okay, so let's say, for instance, if I'm at home now, and I'm watching this on YouTube, and if I got a hungry family member that's hungrier than I am, and I want them to participate in Food Bank, and formerly I was not eligible for SNAP, you all ready to enact a new policy based on what the commission decides to make that food eligible to more prospective candidates? Are you limited to operating only under SNAP?
So, so there's, yeah, so there's an income guideline that we have to follow under SNAP. Or not, it's not under SNAP, but it's an income guideline that we have to follow under USDA that we have to follow. They would have to meet those requirements.
But this box doesn't, right? Because, and we can make it so it's SNAP, just like you said, but that's why we were saying it would be, we had originally targeted not only SNAP gaps, but also government employees that weren't getting paid. Because they normally would not qualify for SNAP. But if you don't want us doing that, we can, we don't, we don't have to do that with these funds.
Right, and just for the, I want to yield back to, I want to yield back to President.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Young. And I'm going to yield to the administrator, because I do know that the guidelines, the dollars that we allocate, how they have to be allocated, and who can actually receive those allocations. Mrs. CEO?
Yes, they would still have to meet the low to moderate income. Unfortunately, the government workers are not considered out of a job, and so their income would still be based on the income that they currently have, even though I know they're not getting paid. So they would not necessarily, they would still have to meet the income threshold. Anyone that you use these funds for would have to meet the income threshold.
And we can definitely do that. I just want to validate that that also includes the people that are currently not going to be getting the SNAP benefits. Like, you know, the ones that they cut out, because now they're just doing the three groups.
Yes, if they meet the income guidelines.
Then we can do it.
It's just the income guideline.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair yields back to Commissioner Young?
I'm finished with my part. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner John Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. You mentioned the trucks that carry 1,600 boxes. What kind of lead time do you need to place that order?
We're saying two weeks. So we've got a pretty good supply chain right now. Feeding America is really working on this, making sure we can get these boxes in. And so we're thinking it's going to be two weeks that we can have them ready to distribute, distribute once we order.
Okay, so what happens if the, if the government shutdown is lifted in the next week?
Well, I don't know. That's a what-if, I can't answer.
Well, I just want to, you know, we all want to avoid waste, and we don't want to place a big order and it's non-avoid a week later.
Well, I mean, I would say this, it could be lifted within the two weeks, but the people are still not going to get, they're not going to get SNAP benefits in that timeframe.
Let me ask my question another way. Do you plan to place $100,000 worth of orders at one time, or do you plan to spread it out?
No, one time, as you understand it.
All right, I don't know if that'd be the way that I would do it, but...
Well, those, well, and it's the 18, the two truckloads we got last week that are already gone obviously went to more than just Caddo Parish, where the majority goes to Caddo Parish just because of the nature of the population.
If you, if I can, if I can interrupt you and just allow me to say that...
It's probably not the place to problem-solve here.
No, no, you're fine with that. I was just going to just add a caveat, that what we're discussing today, it still has to lay over. So it'll be two weeks before we actually make a final vote on this matter anyway. So we may be having a preliminary conversation of something that we're not sure what the results will be right now.
I understand, okay, good point, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, you have the chair.
I'm done, thank you very much.
Okay.
Are any of these, either, any of these food products perishable?
No.
They're all non-perishable.
It's all non-perishable.
So it really wouldn't matter, as I understand it, that if we gave them more money than what they needed, or they acquired more product than what they needed, it still wouldn't die on the vine, so to speak. It would still be available down the road.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
Point has been made, thank you. Vice President Everson?
My question's been asked, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, seeing no other commissioners on the board. All right, that will be all of our questions and comments at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, and the next item on our agenda for today, I don't know if Corporal Daughtry has made it, I don't...
Corporal Daughtry?
See here.
No? Okay.
So they may, we may have to reschedule that for next meeting.
That will be fine. The sponsor just gave a nod of approval. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful, we'll work with them to get that next round. That brings us then to reports, where the first item you have is an administrative report attached.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Just a reminder, we have a budget retrieved for the 2026 budget next week, November 12th. We are scheduling, we have scheduled the food distribution, this is separate from what you're considering on your agenda today, for November 22nd. And that particular distribution will be for any resident to come and get a box that we will be distributing on those days. And so they're scheduled for November 22nd at various locations. We will have a list of those locations ready for you all on Thursday. We will email it to you, but we also have it ready for you on Thursday, just trying to finalize the time. Juvenile detention, we have 12. Let me make sure my numbers are right. They sound low, so I was just making sure that was correct. 12 in detention, three are 17-year-old, 13 CCC, probation 422. We have Mr. William Bradford is here with us today to give an update on the Industrial Development Board. Mr. Bradford?
Mrs. CEO, I just wanted to make sure that I heard you correctly. There are only 12 in the juvenile detention center?
Correct.
Okay, we'll get a small update from Director Randall. Are we trending? Is that about right at this time of the year? Are we trending? Is that about right at this time of the year?
Yes, Madam President, it's consistent with this time of the year. After October, whether it tends to be higher shortly after it does dip a little bit and then as we approach, as we approach the holidays, it tends to slide back.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Madam Administrator, thank you all for your time. I'm William Bradford, 428 Travis Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I am also the chairman of the Industrial Development Board for Caddo Parish. Just here to provide you all with an update. I don't know how granular you would like me to get. I assume we all know what the Industrial Development Board does, but generally speaking, we are an economic development arm of Caddo Parish. We have the ability to purchase property, sell property, lease property, provide incentives for industry, industries that are intending to locate here. We participate often with Louisiana Economic Development on partnering for incentives as well as with other entities. We work closely with North Louisiana Economic Partnership for opportunities as well as the Biomedical Research Foundation. To date, we have, I believe it's 10 members of our board. We are comprised of volunteer members from across the community, all Caddo Parish residents who've been appointed by you. We are here to serve the people of Caddo Parish, again, on a volunteer basis. We are constituted by both state law as well as resolution of this board, when I say of this board, of the Caddo Parish Commission prior when it was a police jury. And we've done a lot in the last 12 months. I'm not certain how far back you'd like me to go, but as of now, I'd like to give you an update on some of the projects we have active out in the community, one of which is Amazon, which I know we're all familiar with. The Industrial Development Board was a key partner in developing that project, bringing that project here to Caddo Parish. And as part of our incentive package, they promised 1,000 jobs. I'm happy to report that their actual count is about 3,000 jobs. So they've outperformed their incentive and that is with no additional incentive being provided. As well, as well, as SLB, which has promised 596 jobs. To date, they have hired 781, so they are outperforming as well. We also, in the last year, have undertaken something that's a little bit out of our norm. We did see a need for economic development opportunities for small businesses, although that is not the, the main meat potatoes of what the IDB does. We did see value in providing opportunities for small businesses, growing local. And so we created the Small Business Economic Development Grant Program, which utilizes a part of our funding. We do not get an allocation from the parish of Caddo. All the revenue that the IDB has is generated on administrative fees from our payment in lieu of tax arrangements or our incentive-based programs. And so this is 100% reinvestment into our local community. And so over the last, you know, eight months or so, we took the time as a board to, to really develop a robust grant program that allows small businesses an opportunity that are staged and ready to grow. There are minimum requirements set forth that meet the Cabela's requirement. Cabela's for you that don't know is the three-step test that we have to meet as a public body when we use public dollars. And so, and reliance on our very learned counsel, Michael Bosada, and in collaboration with our board, we developed this grant program, has, have implemented it. And we're currently advertising with an RFP right now for the checks and balances side of that, the accountability and auditing side of it. So that actively, there actively is an RFP out there. At our most recent meeting, we have an opportunity now to invest in another industry here, which is pharmaceuticals. So that's something that we're taking up. At our next meeting, we have, one of the things that I try to do as the chairman is to alleviate kind of the press. A lot of times when you get these opportunities from LED or you get these opportunities from NLP, it's pretty fast to the draw. Hey, look, we need this incentive. Can we get it up? Calling special meetings. One of the things that I've taken upon myself as chairman is to reinstitute a regular cadence of meetings, so that we are doing this business at our general regular meetings. And also requiring that if anyone is going to come before us with an incentive that we have at least a one-month notice prior to. So our members are no longer getting it five, six days before we have to make a vote on it. We're now taking that deliberative time because if you need that incentive now, you needed it a month ago. And so we're trying to be very intentional about that and we continue to have opportunities presented to us. We vet those to the best of our ability, make reasonable decisions and then hopefully return benefit both in jobs as well as capital investment in the Caddo Parish. Any questions for me? And thank you all for what you're doing. I know it's hard work.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bradford.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the update. We have, the lights are going off. You're going to have, you're very popular right now.
Okay, all right.
Stay tuned. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for coming down, Mr. Bradford. I appreciate the update.
Absolutely.
Just from my education, can you give me a feel for the size, size of scope of the grants that we're looking to provide to the small businesses?
Yeah, so we have an allocation. It's, I believe it's a $200,000 allocation in our, in our fund balance. We don't have a budget. Our operational budget is very small. Again, this is all dollars that have been recuperated from investments or incentive packages. And then the, the minimum requirements of it, or the allowable is 25% of the gap funding you need as a business to grow. So we're not funding, we're de-risking it as much as possible. This is a 25% kind of gap, you know, usually it's the equity they needed to get debt, right? So it helps, for instance, we have a young lady who wanted to expand a trucking business and we were able, and actually she was case study one, right? She sat in the hopper a little longer than many of us would like, but again, we were trying to develop, we were building the plane while we flew it, trying to develop a program that, that worked and meet the needs of our community. But ultimately, she was granted an amount that allowed her to expand her trucking business. And so that's what it's for, proven, proven track record of experience. But it's not intended to be a full funding force. It is supposed to give you that gap funding needed to grow.
And the funding, just, just to make sure I understand, the funding available, I mean, your budget is like 200,000?
Yeah, just, just what's appropriated. Right now, we have a fund balance that's a little over 4 million.
Okay.
But we have allocated a small portion of that for the grant program.
So 200,000 has been allocated over there for that grant program?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And don't, I will get you the exact number. I don't have my budget number in front of me. I will get you that.
That's, that gives me a feel. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to follow up something that John was just talking about. On your small business grant program, did you state the number of grants that you've provided already or you're just starting it up?
We, we just started. It didn't exist a year ago. And so we funded one right now. We've had three applicants, two of which did not meet the minimum requirements, one did. I believe we have another one in the hopper now that would likely meet the requirements and should be taken up. I've asked the chairman of the Grants Committee to hold a meeting to review that application because the committee was created to refer up those that meet the minimum requirements. And then ultimately, the board will take it up at the next, probably two meetings from now.
Thank you, Madam President.
But again, it is very new, yes, sir. And we, we invite anyone to apply. I mean, we, we are open for business. We want to utilize that money. We see that need and recognizing that, you know, not every day, you know, a $20 million project walks through, but there are people here locally that need investment.
All right. Commissioner Ron Catherine.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Bradford, you mentioned the Vet Pharmaceutical. Can you share any additional information concerning that?
Yes, sir. This, this is an entity from Boston, Massachusetts. They're tending to basically double the size of their business. We would actually be their largest location if they locate here. It was brought through LED, Louisiana Economic Development, in coordination with BRF, Biomedical Research Foundation. They've made a commitment to get to 69 jobs in five years with an annual payroll of $5,175,000 and the median income being $75,000. We think it's low, not in a bad way. We think that they're being conservative on their expectations based on that industry. They have asked us to participate with a pilot, which would be commensurate to what they could get with the industrial tax exemption program. But of course, with a pilot, you keep those dollars local. And they've asked for a $1.2 million cash investment. That is about one-third of the cost of a specialized piece of equipment that will be fixed and collateralized with the building. They have agreed to collateralize that. So in the event they do not work out, then of course, that, that, it's a vial filling. They're a pharmaceutical company. They fill vials with medicine. And so that specialized equipment does just that and it is marketable on the gray market. So we have written into that agreement and the incentive, and they have agreed in the incentive package that that is collateralized. And so we've done everything we can, we believe, to de-risk that investment, but it is a new industry. It is an, it activates an area on King's Highway that is vacant right now. There's a building owned by BRF. BRF is in partnership with them, so we have a level of comfort there as well. And again, this has been vetted through Louisiana Economic Development.
Thank you.
Vice President Ken Everson.
Bradford?
Yes, sir.
What amounts of funds did we, what amounts of funds did we, did we give the pharmaceutical any funding incentives?
We, we have not given it yet. There's a final vote. We've approved the preliminary terms. The board is scheduled to vote on this, I believe, next in December. We have preliminarily approved the term sheet being, their required capital investment is $6.957 million. We would give them a 10-year pilot commensurate to the industrial tax exemption program. So they will pay a 20% abhorrent tax requirement. They have to meet the jobs requirement by year 10, but they, on their schedule, will meet it in year five. And then also, we have that $1.2 million capital investment for the purchase of the vial-filling equipment. That's about, that constitutes about one-third of the cost of that equipment. And it is collateralized.
Okay. The general public invited to attend any of your meetings?
Yes, sir. All of our meetings are public. They're advertised and notified.
You publish the same as though like commission 24-hour notice or whatever it is?
Yes, sir. We meet all the same requirements.
What about your board members? You got good committed board members, good attendance?
I think so. Yes, sir. And we've only missed quorum once since I've been there. And it's, I think everybody, again, you know, they're volunteers, so we understand that people's schedules happen, but they're very committed. Our board is great. I'm honored to serve with them. We don't always agree, but that's not how it's supposed to work. We're supposed to have healthy discussion and debate, and we do. And we respect each other's vote and we respect each other's opinions. And again, I'm, I'm very happy to serve with the people I serve with.
Were we able to help the role sent out?
Yes, sir. We did approve $15,000, which was, I think, half of what the parish did. And also, as a side note, Swebco, my employer, did also contribute to that effort as well.
Okay, you say your fund balance is about 4 million?
Yes, sir. Again, that's, so that is, that is in transit. When I say that, it means that that's, it's cyclical. It's not going to always be that high. It just depends on the scale of what we have in the hopper as far as investment opportunities, incentives, packages, and administrative fees.
So that's what you're looking at now, right?
Yes, sir. That's what we, that's what we're sitting at right about now, per our last finance report.
That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Greg Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
Yes, sir.
Coming in today. I just kind of want to piggyback on questions that my colleagues to the left of me kind of focus on, and that is small business fund that you all have developed. I know in our Economic Development Committee, we expressed, myself and Commissioner Thomas expressed an interest in exploring that territory, just so we don't bump heads or be trying to work on the same issue in conflict with one another. I have a question that I like, I think will be very relevant. And that is about whether you all have determined limits for each one of these prospective grantees for that, for these funds under your small business regime, small, small business regime that you recently developed. If you're going to give one company $200,000, then of course, the program is dead.
Right.
That would be accurate.
Right.
So have you all defined a maximum that you would be willing to? I mean, I know, I know each candidate is going to be different in terms of what their needs are. I'm just curious as to whether you all have established a limit that you are going to provide for these small, small business applicants?
Yeah, it's, again, it's that 25% of their funding expectation. But we have a discretion as a board to manage that budget. And so to your point, no, there's not a maximum allowable, right? But we do know we have a budgeted amount. We want the health of this, you know, this program to sustain, to be sustainable. And so as we're managing it from a board level, we are making that decision of how that request will impact our future ability to participate or to invest in other small businesses. And so we eventually, you know, again, this is very new. This didn't exist before this, this current board took office. And so, you know, we're continuing, we're well, hey, we, we welcome any input if we need to do that, something we can absolutely do. We have a, we have digitized it all. So the, the check-through application, actually, when you go in, you have to make acknowledgements, you understand the processes. It's all digitized, so there's not a paper application that customers have to go in and use. But we are, we are managing that at a board level of really what we think is a prudent investment into those small businesses. And again, unlike, say, a, you know, an Acton or an Amazon that comes in, oftentimes, they have not had the vetting process from the grant-level program that these other incentive requesters have, right? They haven't gone through LED, they have not gone through, you know, any of the other, NLP. They've not gone through any of those groups. So we help them through that process when they're in it as well. So that's also part of the process that we're implementing with the grant program.
Right, that, that's beautiful, but that's, that kind of speaks to, you know, more of a broader issue. And I just want to be careful that everybody understands what it is that I'm focused on here today.
Okay.
And what I see, just from an economic development point of view, that the best social program in the world is a good-paying job with benefits. In this community, I've observed that we have a growing NGO population. We, we have people applying to become a nonprofit organization at a pace that is just simply not sustainable.
Right.
And I can just tell you, just from a financing point of view, it is growing rapidly around this horseshoe and it's not something that can be sustained over time. What you're going to have is some people are going to continue to be getting more money depending upon their influence with these elected officials. And some of these organizations who don't enjoy that level of influence, they're going to fall by the wayside. And so we're going to end up with more people who will, who have an interest in trying to help folks fall themselves into greater despair. I think at some point, we have got to figure out how to transition as a community from a nonprofit or business acumen to a for-profit business acumen. And so I would like for you all to join myself and others who are very interested in trying to transition and convert our community culture into building businesses here locally and to create jobs here locally. And because we, we're not going to be the best we can be as long as we're dependent on others. I'm someone who was born in the mud and I've spent my entire life trying to get this mud up off of me. And so we create these nonprofit organizations trying to help people get the mud off of them. It's a lot easier to get dirt off of you, but when you come up through the mud, it takes more effort. And I think one of the most beautiful ways and one of the most effective ways to remove mud is through personal empowerment, not depending on others for your outcomes. And one way to do that is by creating your own business. I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a very, very strong believer that if you can run a nonprofit organization effectively, you can run a for-profit organization. And somehow, some way, we have got to figure that out. So I welcome your participation in this discussion. Thank you very much. I yield back.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. I do not see any other commissioners who are on the board to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford, for the presentation and thank you for your service.
That concludes the administration report. We'll take any questions at this time.
All right. Is there any questions for our administrator? See you tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to commission remarks, communiques, reports, and other items related to the work session agenda.
No one's on for communiques? Is that Commissioner Catherine, is, are you, are you playing tic-tac-toe on the board or are you trying to get on? Oh, okay. So there's no one on the board. All right.
Do we have a president's report today?
I'm reserving it until Thursday.
All righty, then. We have no old business, so we can continue on to new business, where our first item is to consider advancing ordinance 6596 of 2025. That's an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $10 million of limited tax revenue bonds of Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner John Paul Young and a second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Commissioner John Paul Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I believe this is the next normal step in financing the pickleball economic development project that we all voted on. And I think it makes sense for our community, for our parish, to continue down this road toward economic development. Anyone in the world can purchase bonds from this issuance of bonds Anyone in the world can purchase bonds from this issuance of bonds through their financial firm, as we were told in the last economic development meeting. And they are guaranteed, first by the tax, first by the revenue, and then finally by the parish budget of property taxes, which we think we won't need to use because the facility is designed to bring in revenue. And not a penny of it will go to any commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Stefan Jones, would you like to speak on your second? All right. Commissioner Ron Carther?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like a little bit more clarity for the public, not necessarily for me, because as I understand this, you know, the motion has, the vote has already gone in to support the pickleball, regardless of our for or against. And the thing is, at this particular time, what we're doing is actually going through the process of what should happen next. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. This is just a step to actually issue bonds in order to have the revenue to proceed with the project. We're still in the phase of designing and working with the why, but because of the timeframe it takes to actually issue bonds, we had to go ahead and begin the process. We do have the bond attorney here. If you require any additional information from what was provided at our economic development meeting when they came out and spoke about this issue.
I'm good with it, but I just want the public to know. We have already, as a body, stated that we would pursue this particular endeavor. And even if we voted no today, that does not stop the process in and of itself.
It does not.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to emphasize a couple of things on this ordinance. First, let's see, let's note that it says not exceeding $10 million. Everybody's fixated on a $10 million number. This, this says not to exceed $10 million. So hopefully, we can, through value engineering, design a project that doesn't actually cost $10 million. Secondly, Commissioner Young mentioned that, as he correctly mentioned, this debt is intended to be paid off through the use of the facility, through the utilization of the pickleball facility. But before we get to parish dollars, there's also, I mean, before we get to taxpayers' dollars, there's also the other sources of income, like oil and gas and wagering, and, you know, the wagering tax and the boarding fees. So, you know, those dollars, of course, belong to, to the citizens of Caddo Parish, but they're not coming out of the tax base. So there's a slight, slight discrepancy, or slight difference there I wanted to raise.
Just, just clarify, we would pledge the general fund, that's our permanent source of revenue, that's our safest source of revenue. So those are revenues we would pledge. We would pay them from the revenues generated from the facility. And then, if those were not enough, we would pay them from some other source. But we do have to.
We have an option on what sources we could use, and it doesn't necessarily have to be tax dollars, right?
That's correct.
That, that's the point I was trying to make. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing no other commissioners on the board, please vote. This is to advance to Thursday.
Correct.
Correct. And that item is advanced with 10 votes in support, one in opposition to your Thursday agenda. The next item to be considered for advancement today is the ordinance, is ordinance number 6597 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the riverboat and oil and gas funds. And that is related to the food bank request that you heard about earlier.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner John Paul Young and a second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Commissioner Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This, these two budget amendments are to transfer money from oil and gas into the Riverboat Fund, which is the fund from which we fund nonprofits such as the Food Bank. And it's to fund the programs that, the additional SNAP benefits that we were just hearing about from visitors. And that's, I think it's a worthwhile project to help the needy in Caddo Parish, and I hope everyone can support it. I also think Commissioner Jones may have indicated that he wanted to be a cosponsor, but I'll let him say that if he wants.
All right.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. I asked to be a cosponsor of this. I just think it, it must be a blessing to be able to sit in a position where you get to decide if people get food or not. I don't know if that's a blessing or a curse. I don't know how you would look at that. I just know if it not been for the grace of God, there go I. So we're living in some, some terrible times right now. And I think this is an opportunity for us to come together as a community to help those who are in need. And so, I'm not going to get into a big spiel with all this today. I just think some people need to do some soul searching when it comes to, you know, looking out for your fellow man. I don't think anybody's asking you to pay rent or anything like that. People are asking for a box of food. A box of food, unperishable food items. They're not asking for steak and lobster. They're not asking for a vacation. They are in need of a box of food. So just kind of consider that, you know, when you're ready to go to bed tonight, are you?
Thank you. Vice President Emerson.
I just want to let everybody be sure and quite clear as to how this situation arose. And it's not only of SNAP benefits being denied to these citizens based upon the situation that come down from Washington, D.C. There's an exorbitant cost in food generally, all the way beginning from the first of the year. I know I, I went to Sam's, I used to get my 43-ounce can of coffee, Folgers, for $10.98. Now it's $18.98. I remember what I used to pay for bread. I remember what I used to pay for ground ba, and hey, I hadn't seen a ribeye go on sale in I know no when. So you can imagine what people that are underemployed are going through, not only because of this situation that was no fault of their own, nor this body. But let's remember that. And when we're talking about paid vacations, I know somebody that's making $14,250 a month and have not worked in almost two months, won't go to work. Let's make sure we keep it real. Let's keep it real. Let's not forget how this thing came about. And all of these recipients must remember that, too. And they have a responsibility that is easily as signing your name and going in a ballot booth and punching a key as to who you have to represent you, from Washington, D.C. to Baton Rouge, down to this particular chamber, city council, as well as commissioners. Let's not forget that. And I'd like to ask the administration, in the event that this situation is rectified and these benefits are restored between now and whenever, if we could still allocate these funds and do another food donation in the month of December. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron Carther?
I counsel.
Parliamentarian Victor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. When listening to the Food Bank speak, I also want to make a clear distinction between the fact that, because I personally, myself, I live in, in the Lakeside community, and we are in a food desert. So a lot of times, it's not, we're not in a third-world country where people are necessarily starving. However, the quality of food that people have access to is, I think, another thing that's getting lost in this. What Food Bank is trying to provide, a wholesome, quality meal. People are eating, but I've seen people having to suffer with just eating Takis and Doritos and stuff from the nearest liquor store that's in their community. So this provides, this allocation also helps to provide quality food products in a home. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out there as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Roy Burrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to let the public know that this issue is not a Democrat or a Republican issue. I also like to send a message to our president and our Louisiana Congressman Higgins that this money will not be spent on crack. That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. I would like to make a substitute motion at this time to increase this amount to $200,000. If I can get a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a second by Parliamentarian Thomas, and I think I heard a third over here. Commissioner John Paul Young, thank you. And the reason is, is simply because of what has been stated on today. The need is still there. And as Commissioner, Vice President Emerson rather stated, even if these funds are not be, will be able to be used during the next cycle, we're sure that there's still going to be need. As Parliamentarian Thomas stated, there is, we have food deserts all over Caddo Parish. And we understand that hunger leads to crime. And inevitably, those crimes that happen are going to be our responsibility in Caddo Parish. I was glad that it was mentioned that this is not an issue that started here locally, but it is our responsibility to take the action here locally, because we are closest to the people. So I ask that if you would support this motion up to $200,000 so that we can allocate additional funding to address this issue. Thank you. Commissioner Ron Carther?
Thank you, Madam President. So are we saying that we would go up to $200,000 to the Food Bank? Are we talking about in its entirety? Are we talking about in separate, maybe the first 100, and then come back a second 100?
If we need to, we can, because the funding has already been allocated for the first distribution, as Vice President Emerson mentioned. And so, if these funds are not needed to address the SNAP issue, if the law works it out before then, then so be it. The funding will be there.
Okay. I just wanted for clarity, because the thing is, again, to go from 100 to 200,000 is kind of significant to me, and I do understand that there are people out there that are doing without. And the thing is, as Commissioner Stefan said a few minutes ago, and by the grace of God, is it not I? But the thing is, again, is that I want to ensure that the public know that we're not just, you know, throwing some numbers around. And the thing is, again, we're looking at it in increments, you know, to prayerfully hope that the shutdown will go away and people will get to as normal of a life as they can get to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner John Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we consider your second $100,000 allocation, take it up for consideration at our last December meeting. So we go ahead and vote on, my, my substitute motion is we go ahead and vote on the original 100,000 with the, with the requirement that in a month, we come back and take a look regarding the second 100,000.
Do you have a second on that?
Thank you. You understand, Madam President, you understand what I'm trying to do there? I just want to take a look at these one step at a time instead of all, instead of doing it all at once.
Yes. All right. That concludes your comments?
Yes.
All right. Seeing no other commissioners on the board?
So this would be a vote for, so what you'd be voting on now is for the substitute motion to consider the second, the second $100,000 as a separate vote? And now, to be clear.
Before we vote, I have, Mr. Clark, I have another commissioner who has a question. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for our administration. Ms. Bryant, if we voted for the $200,000 now, how would you decide what, when to release the money to the Food Bank?
I think y'all should, you would all have to put those stipulations in there, and legal would make sure, if you waited till your December meeting, you have to remember, we do not carry over funds to the next year. You only have the first meeting in December, so there wouldn't be a second meeting to vote on it. So you can make the stipulations in this particular ordinance that you would do it 100,000 at a time, based on whatever parameters you'd like to put in there, so that we wouldn't pay out the second 100,000 based on whatever stipulations you all. But we would not have enough time to do another budget amendment after the second meeting in November.
Is that something that we could leave up to our administration to determine? Like, what the criteria should be for the dispersment of the second 100,000?
Yes. If the funding is already there, that's what she will be able to do anyway.
Okay. And would you be comfortable doing that without lots of further?
Yeah. So right now, my understanding is that if, if we're still dealing with the situation with SNAP benefits, then, right now, you have a distribution schedule for November 22nd. We would hand those out. These funds would go to the Food Bank, who would then vet persons based on their income to receive these. Should the shutdown end, then you may want to consider a second actual distribution, like we're doing on November 22nd.
Correct.
And should we do that, you want to consider another 100,000 for that? Am I understanding correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That satisfies me. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So a point of information, I just want to make sure I'm clear, Madam President.
Okay. The chair will recognize your point.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
I'm not working. I punched my button twice and I have to.
I got you. You, I, I still have you in the queue. I just took you off of the board to allow his point to be heard so that he wouldn't utilize your time.
I just want to make sure I understand. Commissioner John Paul, in seeking clarity as to how we're moving forward, we're going to vote on 100,000, or we're going to vote on the 200,000 with the second 100,000 as a matter of contingency up to the discretion of the administration? Is that essentially what we're about to do here?
That's, if, if that's what you're in support of, I personally am not in support of that amendment. My, the amendment that I made is what I'll be supporting.
If mine doesn't pass, it falls back.
Right. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you.
Right.
Now, mine probably is more of a point of clarification. Even if the shutdown starts, stops tomorrow, it's going to take a while for the government to gear up. So, you know, and if this, even if the money is there and the government shutdown stops, it's, it's not going to be instantaneous. It's going to have to be, probably be a month. That's how government works. And so, we probably still will need these funds. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Vice President Emerson?
Now, these, this distribution will be only for Caddo residents. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for making sure that that was on record, Vice President Emerson. Okay. Seeing no other commissioners on the board to speak?
So remember, what we have on the board right now is, no, I'm sorry, actually, the substitute motion
Yes.
for the, for, for Commissioner Atkins, which is the one that would postpone the second consideration as a, as a separate item. But my question that I was hoping to have clarified before we do this is, your motion, Commissioner Atkins, would also include the advancement of the original item, or no? So are you, are you, is your motion to postpone the other one, and then we would have to consider as a separate motion advancing it? Or you're advancing the original one and postponing the second?
I'm advancing the original and postponing the second 100,000 till, to be reassessed in about a month by administration.
Thank you. Yes. So just to be clear, this also advances the original item.
I have a point of clarity.
It does not allow for a second 200,000 discussion today until the next meeting.
I have a point of clarity. Wouldn't both motions essentially accomplish the same thing?
Well, this motion would be similar to the very first motion. It's a substitute motion to the substitute motion. Commissioner Gage Watts's substitute motion, the original motion was to advance the item. The second, the first substitute motion was from Commissioner Gage Watts to add an additional $100,000. The third motion is to essentially do what the first one would do, but also separate out a discussion of an additional 100,000 to a later date.
Okay. Thank you.
It would not be determined till the final meeting.
The maker said within a month, and I think we've already disclosed the information, that that wouldn't be sufficient, because we don't have another meeting. Okay. All right. Our hearts and minds are clear? Please vote. All right. Our hearts and minds are clear? Please vote.
Commissioner Burrell, it looks like did not lock gears. Thank you very much. Okay, that motion fails. And I believe that's three in support and eight in opposition. And so that motion does not carry. So we will go on to the substitute motion from Commissioner Gage Watts to consider up to $200,000 for this item. Advance the consideration of this item, amending the dollar amount to 200, up to 200. And that motion carries with nine in support, two in opposition, to be advanced to your, for introduction on Thursday. And that brings us now to the consideration of advancing ordinance number 6598 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending ordinance 6554 of 2025 pertaining to a schedule of licenses and fees and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
I have a motion by Parliamentarian Thomas, second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
No, ma'am. I'll yield to administration if they have anything they'd like to say.
Yes, sir. These are some corrections we're making from the last fee changes and adding some fees that we did not get in for Walter B. Jacobs.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your second? Commissioner John Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. Amendment administrator, is this, so this is a correction to those, the proposed fee structure that we voted on earlier in the year?
Yes, sir. Correction for some, and then we're adding some that we did not include for the new center that will be opening in January.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Seeing no other commissioners on the board, please vote.
And that motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and brings us now to the consideration of advancing ordinance number 6599 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending Article II of Chapter 36 of the Code of Ordinances relative to alcohol and drunkenness in parish parks and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Jean Paul Young, second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Commissioner Jean Paul Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President. This ordinance comes from Legal and it allows the new Walter B. Jacobs Event Center to serve alcohol at events, but it still forbids drunkenness in parish parks and also forbids alcohol at parish parks that are not Walter B. Jacobs during an event. Thank you.
Thank you. How interesting.
Madam President, I'm sorry.
Commissioner John Atkins.
I don't see that, that ordinance on here yet. Does any?
If you could refresh your browser, it should be on there.
Oh, it just, it just, it just.
Some of those were introduced by title initially, and then they were added later.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You may have to refresh.
Thank you, Madam President. That's fine.
All right. Commissioner Ron Carthron.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I understand the logic behind all of this, and it makes a whole bunch of sense. But how do we, how do we control, or what do we have in place to control drunkenness?
That's outside of our pay grade. I can answer that for you, but go ahead. Get a legal opinion.
But I'm voting on something.
Commissioner, right now, say for instance, where there's no alcohol allowed in any of our parks. If something happens in a park where law enforcement has to be called and they discover that drunkenness or alcohol is a part of the issue, they can make an arrest. They can do the same thing here. If, and technically what it should do is put persons who are renting the event center on notice that they need insurance for this to ensure that this doesn't happen. They have to get security for these things. All of those things are part of the contract. And so it should basically help them to police themselves to make sure that they are not serving people to the point of drunkenness.
Thank you very much for that clarity. And I'll just take it a step further, you know, since I'm going to be silly. Are we going to have a breathalyzer present as well?
Just a question.
That it does not warrant an answer. Thank you so much. I see no one else on the board. Please vote.
And that motion carries with 11 in support to advance that item to your Thursday agenda for introduction. The next item to be considered is advancing ordinance number 6600 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 52 of the Code of Ordinances relative to utilities, including solar farm regulations and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
All right, I see a motion by Commissioner Jean Paul Young, second by Commissioner Chris Crackman. Commissioner Jean Paul Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President. This is a pretty lengthy amendment to our Code of Ordinances relating to solar farms. I hope everyone will read it before we vote on it on Thursday. I had a chance to read it a moment ago, and I just wanted to let our attorney know that Section D2 contains the word county, county and state parks instead of parish.
Thank you for the observation.
And if I could, just as a point of information, mention that when we received this item initially, we were understanding that it was to be sponsored by Public Works, but it is actually sponsored by Commissioner Gage Watts. So just to let everyone know.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Crackman, would you like to speak on your second? All right. Okay. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
Okay, and that item advances with 11 in support, none in opposition. And the next item to be considered for advancement is ordinance number 6601 of 2025. That's an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and authorize the parish administrator or designee to sell the parish of Caddo's tax interests in certain surplus adjudicated properties and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Those properties are located in District 3.
And it's been moved by District 3 Representative Parliamentarian Victor Thomas and second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Would you like to speak on your motion, Parliamentarian Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to advance ordinance 6601 of 2025 to advance Resolution 43, advance the resolution regarding the Civil Rights Legends Banquet, to advance the special resolution honoring Mr. Shamariyon McCoy, to advance the special resolution for Avira Hilaire. And I will stop at special resolutions.
All right, and the chair will second. Okay. Would you like to speak on any of those?
No, I didn't want to say that District 3 has no opposition to ordinance 6601. And also, I look forward to you all hearing about the accomplishments of Mr. Shamariyon McCoy. And I'll yield the rest of my time to anyone who has any special resolutions that they'd like to speak on those individuals.
All right. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to be added to, who's that?
Civil rights.
To the special resolutions?
Yeah. I was trying to get the number of the first one.
Did you, the special resolutions, you had Shamariyon McCoy, the Civil Rights Museum Legend Banquet? And Avira Hilaire? Okay.
Point of information, it seems like resolutions 43 through 46, 43, 44, 45, 46. Oh, no, 45. No, 43, 44, 45, 46.
All right. It'll be all? That's it, Commissioner Burrell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, please vote on the englovoing and advancement.
Okay, and those items are advanced with 11 in support and none in opposition. That brings us to our first, our next item to be considered, which is advancing the reappointment of William Bradford to the Industrial Development Board.
Okay, I have a motion by Parliamentarian Thomas and a second by Commissioner Ron Carthron. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, I'd like to motion, make a motion to advance all reappointments and appointments that are listed. And would like to encourage those individuals to please make sure to provide their letters of interest and resumes to all new appointments.
And a second by Commissioner Ron Carthron. Commissioner Jones afterward, okay. Would you like to speak on your second? Okay. Seeing no other discussion, please, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand like when we have these districts and stuff, it's usually left up to the commissioner from that area, correct? Is there any way that I can co-sponsor an appointment?
Of course.
Okay, I'm just asking, I'm trying to get cleared on it. But I still would like to be listed for Brad Smith if I can. Some kind of way if you can do that for me, Jeff, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
Okay, that motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and brings us to your second round of communiques and committee reports. And at this time, we'll just also remind everyone that the public hearing that you set last Thursday for the 2026 budget ordinances will be during your November 23 regular session meeting.
All right. I just want to say thank you to all of you who supported moving, advancing the ordinance addressing the solar farms. This is one of the action items that has been discussed with the Police Juror Association of Louisiana and our executive board over the last three months. And this is an opportunity for us to be ahead of the curve. So I'll speak more on it Thursday, but this is something that will be advantageous for Caddo Parish. Thank you. Commissioner John Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to convey to my colleagues that, and my friends at the food bank, I'm not opposed to the food bank. I just want to remind you all, I was voting to support, support funding, but I wanted to do it in tranches, not one big batch at a time. So we were all unanimous in our desire to support. It's just a function of how we thought the best way to support it would be. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Ron Carthron.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge on the 6th of November, 2 o'clock, we will be having a, another long-range planning and special project committee meeting to address the job core issue that they had brought to us during our last session that we were here. Also, just, you know, we will be having a Southern Hill Neighborhood Association meeting tonight at 6 o'clock. And the police jury meeting was really nice that we attended as well, especially with the gift that I received. And had to, yeah, yeah, yeah. And had an opportunity to attend the McDonald House reception. And I think we should get Mr., Mr. Griggs here just to come, because I mean, he went on and on and on thanking the parish for what we have done to assist in that endeavor. And lastly, I had an opportunity on the 28th of October to attend the butterfly brunch, which has to do with Domestic Violence Task Force. They're doing some really great things among there because again, they're looking at ways to shorten the period of time that a person get identified as far as having a incident till the time that they actually have them in a safe place. So again, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthron. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, I guess, raise a point of clarity for that date. It says the 23rd. Should it be the 20th? Because on the 23rd, I'd be rightly dividing the word of truth.
I'm sorry, you are right. It is the 20th.
Okay. It's just, it was publicized as the 23rd. I just want to mention.
Just a typo on the, on this particular.
For the public hearing for the budget ordinance. Yes.
Make sure that's correct.
Right.
It is correct. By the way, it is correctly advertised. That is just on this.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure, because I'm going to be at church. I don't know where y'all are.
The public advertising many times.
Watch its great point, Reverend Jones.
Madam President, could you just mention what date we're talking about?
November 20th?
For the.
The public hearing for the 2026.
For the budget.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, okay. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to mention two things because I've been inundated with calls as a representative of the downtown district. The city council will be holding an emergency meeting regarding recent crime instances that have happened downtown. It's going to be tomorrow in these chambers at 10 o'clock. So I welcome anyone to please come and engage with the city council and our city officials regarding that. Also, I'm very thankful to have a congressman who meets with his constituents in our area. On tomorrow evening, Congressman Cleo Fields will be downtown at the, at the Susla Metro Nursing Center at 610 Texas Street. So I'm sure that we have a lot of discussion that we'd like to, that we'd like to share with him. As Commissioner Emerson mentioned, there are a lot of things that are going on in Washington that affects us directly here at home, as we can see, and as we're literally debating on. So I just want to let, let people know about those events. Once again, there'll be one at 10 o'clock here in Government Plaza and one tomorrow at Susla Metro Nursing Center, 610 Texas, at 6 o'clock PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jean Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to let everyone know about a fantastic program that I just participated in and then graduated from last week. It's called the Citizens Police Academy for the Shreveport Police Department. It gave me an opportunity to have eight classes over a month with the police department. Each one, I, I told them in the class, I thought one of those classes at least would turn out to be boring, but every one of them was riveting. It gave me the opportunity to meet and become friends with many police officers. Sadly, some of them are about to retire, but we made friends with quite a few. I have, I feel a much more direct line to the people who enforce the law in my neighborhood and my city. And one of the most exciting and fascinating things was that they got, they gave us the opportunity to see all their toys, from indoor drones to super expensive canine units, to outdoor drones, to the new, brand new mobile command center, which is like the best motorhome in the world, and their new Bearcat, which is like a tank, and all the other special departments, special units. It was a really fantastic experience. They told me that I was the first elected official who had ever participated in that program. I said this online, and former mayor Cedric Glover corrected me and said that he had participated in 2005. And then I told that to the, the officers who were in charge, Lieutenant Sanchez and Captain Silva. And they said, well, he participated in 2005, but this is a completely different academy now. And he needs to come and do it again. And I, and I was given the charge to recommend as highly as possible, or, or at least maybe even so vehemently as to convince someone else to go and do the academy as well. So I'm going to officially, as a police, as a Shreveport Police Department ambassador, which is my new title, so you may refer to me if you wish as Your Excellency. Invite each of you to participate in the Shreveport Police Department Citizens Police Academy. They will have another one in the spring. You can contact your CLO officer if you want to get involved in that. It is really, really worth it. And I hope that everyone will take the opportunity to do that in the near future. Thank you.
Yes, Your Excellency.
Point of information, Madam President.
The chair recognizes the point.
Madam President, I'd just be curious to know if, if all of this training you received, was it cerebral or was any of it physical?
It was mostly cerebral, but they did, they did make us, that we responded to a mock crime scene, and that was a little bit physical. And we, we had to do a little walking. But we always had a very impressive escort. So it was very slightly physical, mostly, mostly classroom work.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Vice President Emerson.
Your Excellency Jean Paul Young, I would recommend that they add you go, you all going through the gas chamber. Right, huh?
Some real training, huh?
The gas chamber, right? Yeah. Get a shot of what you, what you give out.
Ain't nothing like the gas.
Okay. I would just like to say, I want to give you a little food for thought. 10-4 usurps and poor rank on 6-7. That's all I got to say. Operation Green Light. Operation Green Light officially starts today, November the 3rd through the 11th. November the 3rd through the 11th, with a green light bulb in your front porch. Government Plaza, light up green, municipalities, Bojangles participating with us. A lot of our other Police Juror Association, I think the court sent out some information on it to let our veterans know that they are welcome home and appreciated. And it's 6 o'clock? We need to fall back. Okay, don't forget to tell them, I know, you know, I do that every year. Tell them not to forget to fall back on our clock. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner John Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I was trying to get some clarity. I, I saw that there was a long-range planning meeting, and it made reference to Sheriff's Substation. Can someone just brief the commission on that?
It's, it's going to be a very long brief, however.
Okay, thank you. I'd like, that'd be fine, thank you.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you.
Can I ask, Madam Chair, could we get the Sheriff's Department to give us a digital version of their presentation?
We can, and what we'll, what we'll also do is distribute the video from today, and we'll have minutes-
But I mean, tell them to send it out to us.
It's, it's too large.
Clerks do it.
And also just-
Well, either give us a hand copy, whatever, whatever you think a, a good briefing that we can take back and articulate. And of course, you know, you can always go back and art, and look at the archive on the video at-
Right, the video is up already.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to commend Boja Parish for a very fine Police Regional, Police Jury Association meeting, and to congratulate you, Madam President, on being re-elected to the Executive Board.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I failed to mention earlier, a group called Cedar Grove United is having a bless-the-block park cleanup this Saturday at nine a.m. at Abbey Palmer Park. That's at five forty-seven East Seventy-Ninth Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Again, that's this Saturday, November the eighth. It will start at night, nine a.m., and run until one P.M. If you need more information about that, you can contact the organizers at three-one-eight, three-four-nine, nine-six-two-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other commissioners on the board, next item, please.
We do not have any requests for citizens' comments later rivals.
All right, next item. All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Just as a quick reminder on the consent agenda, there is an item that skipped the meeting, so it was postponed to this meeting, so just a reminder to, if y'all want to take a look at that and make sure you don't forget about it. It's the item that was- Right, the, the library budget.